Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting tonight. We welcome you as a city council. We love having you here. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which is located at the table outside the main entrance you came in or to your right over there. Fill it out and then give it to the city clerk. She sits right here. She'll raise her little hand. And then when I call upon you, we ask that you -- request that you limit your comments no more than three minutes and we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we are.
Thank you. Tonight, we have an opportunity to have an invocation given by Pastor Aaron Hansel from the Discovery Church. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Well, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, God. And first of all, I want to thank you for this leadership team. I thank you for the city council and I thank you for the authority that you have placed in this city to lead and to guide and to govern your people. Father, I pray that you would lead this time tonight. I pray that you would lead this team with your wisdom. God, that you would guide them with your hand and that all business would be done to glorify you. Father, I also pray that your blessings would continue to rest upon our city. Father, as this team, God needs your wisdom. They need your strength, God, to see -- to continue to see the growth and to see the people prosper in this city. And we thank you for them. We thank you for our leaders. We thank you for this city. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Richard, I mean Aaron, pardon me. Would you like to say something about your church, maybe where it's located and somewhere in our community or brief advertisement time for you?
Oh, right. Thank you. So, Discovery Church is a small, little storefront church right there off of Craig and Losi, right across the street from the cannery. Been there for 13 years going on. Pastor Dean Sanner is the senior pastor there. And it's really a church that loves the community, loves people. So, one of our greatest joys is when seeing people really step into the destiny and the call of God on their lives and seeing families get healed and, you know, stuff like that. So, it's just a wonderful little -- it's a small, little, family-oriented church. So, it's a great thing.
We appreciate you. And thank you for sharing your time with us today and blessing us. And you don't have to stay here. You can leave whenever you want. Just, you know, okay. We're going to move on to presentations. Tonight, we have a proclamation for the Public Works Week to present it by Jed Wheeler from the Nevada Chapter of American Public Works Association. So, council, let's go down. I think Director Tom Brady is coming down too to be involved in this.
Mayor and council, at the same time, we're going to do presentation number two while you guys are down there to receive an award for the American Public Works Association for Project of the Year. We'll do it at the same time. Thank you.
I just wanted to let everyone know, this right now is the National Public Works Week, and we take the opportunity to recognize that. And we have Jed Wheeler here as a representative of the American Public Works Association. And at that, I will -- it's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of North Las Vegas. And whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in the city of North Las Vegas to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, do hereby designate the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in and for the city of North Las Vegas and encourage all citizens to join in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees. And witness that whereof, we have set our hand and caused the seal of the city of North Las Vegas to be affixed this 11th -- today's not the 11th, the 18th day of May 2022. Let's hear for our public works professionals. And as well, you know, this is a great recognition, but we'd also like to recognize Jed Wheeler with American Public Works Association because they also have an award to recognize the city for.
All right. Thank you, Tom. And thank you, council, for doing this. We appreciate all your hard work in supporting all the public works projects that are out there. You know, the building that we're in, the roads that we drive on, the water, sewer, storm drain, everything that we use is, you know, just you help provide that for the city of North Las Vegas and make this a better to community to live in. My name is Jed Wheeler with Horrocks Engineers, and we were the construction management firm on this project. It was the sewer main -- let's see, sewer main rehabilitation, Losi Road and Cheyenne Avenue. And the project went really well. And so, we decided to put this in for Project of the Year at the Spring Conference of the APWA, you know, association in Mesquite, Nevada, just a few months ago. And it won. So, we're excited to bring this plaque back to city of North Las Vegas and congratulate you on another project well done and well managed. And we appreciate working with Dale on the public work side and then Tom on the engineering side and then also Mike Hudgens over on the construction management engineering side as well. So, just thank you and for your continued support in APWA and congratulations on this award.
Well, I have the microphone, so I can do what I want. I just want to say congratulations and just thank you. And Cheyenne and Losi is not a bad place to be either, you know. But just, you are the backbone, and we could not function as a city at all without public works in any realm, facet, or it just, it's a magical place. And so, you guys are like what I call the one-stop shop for everything, city of North Las Vegas. So, thank you and congratulations.
Roads and streets and sewers are very important, but they're all underneath the ground. So, we hope you enjoy it when you drive over the top of them. Thank you very much.
I don't know. Hey, guys, maybe I can just mention this. You know, of course, I'm a representative for the RTC and flood control. Maybe I can work in somehow for them to say something, you know, to recognize this because it's a big deal. Congratulations.
Just very quickly, very quickly. I have a lot of departments on speed dial on my phone, and I think Public Works is right at the top of the list there. So, I know, we all know, they do an amazing job here with the city, you know, building and expanding the way it is, you know, putting in roads and then cutting up the roads again and then patching the roads. They're doing an amazing job just to keep everybody going straight. So, we appreciate all that you do. Dale, you know that, right?
Thank you.
We're now moving on to council items. Councilman Barone.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always, by the way, it's always proud to, I'm always proud to see, you know, we have such a fantastic staff that they're really tops in their field. Just a few quick announcements. I'm happy to say that the city of North Las Vegas Safe Key Summer Camp is going to start here on May 31st and go through July 29th. For anybody who's listening, registration is now open at the Safe Key Main Office. That's at 3909 West Washburn or simply call 702-633-1608. And of course, our safe key is highly recommended. Mayor, I think next week, we have a big deal. You know, we've been trying to push our city into new industries that will lead us and make us, you know, part of the cutting edge of the future. And so, I'm very happy that, I think several of you are going to be joining me for air liqueased ribbon cutting ceremony on May 24th for a liquid hydrogen facility. And again, this cutting-edge kind of stuff, you know, hydrogen fuel cell. So, that's a, that's a big deal. And finally, the city of North Las Vegas Small Business Connector, Small Business Mixer Meeting will be from 5:30 to 7:30 on June 2nd at the North Fifth Brewery. I think a couple of my colleagues and I, we all went there one time and it was great. And so, it's really nice to see that we're going to actually have the mixer, no pun intended, there at the brewery. Registration is open this week. Proceed to the city of North Las Vegas website and Facebook page to RSVP. And I think that's enough for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barone. Mayor Pro Tem Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of important items here. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to break ground for our first Veterans Resource Center in Ward 4, which is just adjacent to our generational facility run by the YMCA. That's going to be the first actual, I want to say, let's call it brick and mortar for now, location for our veterans to go there and meet, socialize, and have an opportunity to acquire some of the resources, medical resources and such that they need. Very close to the VA, great location, and of course, it's pretty much just down the street from the upcoming soon-to-be Job Creation Zone. So, I was very pleased with that, and I appreciate all the support that the, that the city council and the city gave to that very needed location and thing for our veterans. Next week, I believe it is, or very close to it, we're going to have a groundbreaking for the new police station at the villages of Tulley Springs, which will be located on Deer Springs between Revere and Gliding Eagle. And I hope that some of you may have an opportunity to come by and see that beautiful building there. And lastly, I want to mention once again, the Business of the Month. I want to thank Dr. Florence and Frank Jamison for donating 70% of their revenues to all of the North Las Vegas nonprofits that we have here. But just for the record, let me also indicate that, once again, that I'd like to thank the Tree of Life for its unexpected and generous donation of $5,000 to the Armed Forces and Military Veterans Appreciation, Inc., of which I am the chair and president. My wife Gloria is the treasurer and Laura Coleman is the co-chair. In my position as councilman and in choosing Tree of Life as the Business of the Month, I did not solicit or suggest or know that a donation be made to the Armed Forces and Military Veterans Appreciation that last week at council meeting. I understand that there may be instances where matters related to dispensaries or Tree of Life may come before the council again. I will make the necessary disclosure and, if appropriate, abstain from voting when such matters are considered. So, I appreciate everybody understanding that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Last few weeks have had several awesome events that I was privileged to participate in. The first one was on May 5th. It was the National Day of Prayer. We celebrated it out here in the courtyard in front of City Hall. I was there with Mayor Lee, Dr. Tony Robinson. It was my honor to share some of my personal thoughts and feelings and experiences on the power of prayer and faith in my life. And so, that was really humbling and awesome. On the 11th of May, I had the opportunity to speak to second and third graders at Cozine Elementary School in Ward 3. Talked a little bit about for Career Day, what city council people do, what we do in the city council, and how it directly affects their families. And we talked about the process of getting this awesome job, and we had a mock election to illustrate that. They had two chinchillas in their class, Lucky and Paco, and Lucky was the winner of the election, and they really liked that illustration. On Friday, May 13th, the mayor and I attended a grand opening of a new location for Silver State Schools Credit Union in the Smith Shopping Center in Aliante. They were located for a number of years in the grocery store, and they've moved into a larger building in that complex, and that was a nice event. This morning was really great. There is a new community park in Valley Vista, which is master plan community north of Elkhorn in Ward 3, nine-acre park, beautifully done by D.R. Horton, the master developer of Valley Vista. Amenities and opportunities for outdoor recreation for all ages and for a wide variety of activities. Councilwoman was there and we both, I brought my pickleball paddles, and we broke in one of their awesome new pickleball courts. So, that was fun. And then lastly, the Silver Mesa Rec Center, the swimming pool, the complex they have there, went through a massive renovation. And on June 4th, they'll be re-grant, doing a re-grand opening of the Silver Mesa Rec Center, helping sponsor that event. And we'll have a great family event. Come on out. Southern Nevada Health District, Move Your Way Grant is helping support that as well. So, spread the word about that awesome beginning of summertime event. Thanks, Mayor Lee.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thanks, Mayor. And just to piggyback about the Veterans Resource Center, I received a post on my Twitter page from a nonprofit in another state, and they just said, you know what, we don't twit, twit, I don't Twitter much, is what it says. But anyway, they say, well, we would love to expand to Las Vegas and help by offering computers to your Veterans Resource Center. So, I thought that was really, really a great thing to do, and so, staff is looking into this and see if they can make this happen so they can partner with us some, in the way of donating some computers once that time comes. I was invited to visit one of the charter schools here. It's called the Delta Academy. It's right on Brooks and Revere. And to see their performing arts program, and some of the kids that came into that school didn't even know what a guitar case was, is what the teacher said, or yet alone how to play a guitar. And so, they learned how to read music and play the guitar, the drums, bass, all the instruments that they need, the keyboards. And so, last night, they performed downtown, and it was called Rhapsody in Rock Concert. It was phenomenal to see the talent on the stage from so many genres of music that these kids perform, from the Beatles to Aretha Franklin, just a Motown, all the way to 80s and 90s music. So, it was really, really a phenomenal concert. So, congratulations to the Delta Academy for their final spring performance. Well, our Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy is going to be sunset this, this year. We've accomplished our goal. I am so proud of the quality of education and the growth that our kids made while they attended SNUMA for the last two years. And they are going to be celebrating, along with us, their Field Day, which will be on next week on, at both SNUMAS, at our Southern, Neighborhood Rec Center and Silver Mesa Rec Center. And then, following that, on the 24th and the 25th, will be their graduation ceremony. So, just look for more information about the SNUMA graduation and all the great things that our kids have accomplished this year. Saturday, our North Las Vegas Police Department is hosting a community barbecue. It's going to be at Valley View Park from noon to 4:00. So, please come out. This is another one of their community policing efforts to see what they do and talk to some of our officers and enjoy some great barbecues. And that's the Valley View Park, which is in neighborhood of Valley View on, is it 2400 Bennett Street, I believe? I might have the number wrong. But it's off of Lake Mead and Englestad. And then finally, on Monday, from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Martin Luther King Senior Center, the Armed Forces Chamber, and myself are hosting another health fair. This will be a healthy way for our veterans to come out and learn about some more valuable resources that are in our community. So, if you're available, please stop by. Thank you.
Boy, you guys are busy. Congratulations on being such great assets to your community. We're going to move on to the city council's first public forum. This is time set aside for comment on posted agenda items. Items listed on the public hearing section of the agenda will have their own public hearings when they are to be heard. So, if you want to speak on any items today's agenda, other than public hearings, items now would be that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards posted for this?
No, sir.
We don't? Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come up here and discuss this? Seeing none, we will close the public forum. We're moving on to the agenda.
Item 3 for possible action, to approve city council regular meeting agenda for May 18th, 2022. Mayor and council, it's our recommendation.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items number 4 through 14. It's our recommendation to approve as published.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve consent.
We have a motion for the consent agenda. Please pass your vote.
Did I push something wrong? Sorry.
No, it's not. It's...
It's a yes.
Well, it says items approved. I didn't see the names, but, oh, there's, there they are. Item approved. Moving on to public hearings.
Item number 15 for possible action, to approve AMP-02-2022, Tropical Losi, for applicant Harmony Homes to request amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from neighborhood commercial to single-family medium located at the southwest corner of Losi Road and Tropical Parkway.
Thank you very much. Mr. Groenauer, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. My name, for the record, is Bob Groenauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing Harmony Homes in this matter. We are asking for a zone change for a residential development. They're going to be townhomes for sale. This is on approximately 15 acres of property, and we've had staff's recommendation for support. We've also had unanimous recommendation last week by the Planning Commission for support, and I'm here asking for your support tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to step aside for just a second if somebody comes up, but we're going to open a public hearing. Is anybody here to discuss this item with the council? Seeing none, Mr. Groenauer, I think you must have done a good job. I'll close the public hearing and go to council. Councilman Groans Brown?
No questions. If that's the case, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Well, it's saying item approved, so Bobby...
It's not showing us the screen to say yea or nay. It just jumps from, when I made the motion, it just jumps to approve.
So, Councilwoman, if you don't mind, if you would voice your vote, we'll enter it for you.
Yes.
We're completed voting. There it is. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Delayed action.
Item number 16.
Item number 16 for possible action, to approve AMP-03-2022, mixed-use commercial densities for applicant city of North Las Vegas to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan specifically to increase the residential density range within the mixed-use commercial land use category and providing for other matters probably related thereto.
Thank you very much. Mr. Celeste, nice to see you here today. Do you have a little presentation for us?
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, council members. My name is Tony Celeste, address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of Colita Development. We have been working with Mr. Jordan and Mr. Eastman in your planning department with respect to the amendment to this proposed comprehensive plan. It would take portions of the text in the mixed-use area and allow, in certain areas, increase the density of over 25 units to the acre. You have been working with them, identified specific planning activity centers, one in which would be, in addition to what exists today, North Las Vegas, or the North Fifth Corridor, would be the Craig Ranch, or Craig Road Corridor. And in those targeted areas, you could request a density greater than 25 units to the acre. One thing I do want to stress in working with the planning department is that just by amending this portion of the comprehensive plan, it by no means diminishes the design standards or the development standards. All the elevated standards will remain, including open space and the balconies and elevated elevation design that are required. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. And I think this is an exciting thing for the city. You're going to see, I think, a lot of high-end developers such as Colita coming in on some of these more infill pieces. We appreciate staff's recommendation and Planning Commission's recommendation as well.
I'm going to open a public hearing right now. Is there anybody here? Do we have any blue, I have a blue, no, I don't. Do we have anybody here that would like to discuss this issue with the city council at this time on item 16? I know we're going to close the public hearing. Everybody's serious about this. We have a lot of questions from the city council. Mary, are you here to answer all those questions?
I hope I can, sir.
Mary, we're just saying, welcome to the big leagues. It's nice to have you here. Mark couldn't be here today.
He's on vacation.
All right. Well, just to let you know, we recognize you're up there and you're a qualified person to work in that position. Thank you. So, at this time, if there's no other comments or questions from the council, the chair will take a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, I had the opportunity of being briefed on this item with Tony here and Mr. Groenauer. And I understand fully what the thought processes are in this, and it kind of makes sense to me, particularly in those locations where we have higher density along Craig and of course, along North Fifth. And it won't impact whatsoever the other existing ordinances when it comes to density. So, if there aren't any other questions from council, I'll be happy to go ahead and make a motion to approve AMP-03-2022.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion. Discuss your vote. Items approved.
Thank you.
Item number 17 for possible action, to approve VAC-04-2022 for applicant SA Recycling to vacate public right-of-way, APN 123-28-399-003, generally located on North Nellis Boulevard, north of El Campo Grande and south of I-15. The recommendation for this is mayor and council to approve, but now that I know that Mr. Hardy's representing the item, I have some reservations.
Well, they actually have a former county commission person here too that I might have too. Ms. Redondo, welcome to the city of North Las Vegas. I know you lived here for many years, and it's nice to have you back in this capacity. So, go ahead and...
Mayor John Lee, it is very nice to see you, city council. For the record, Janice Redondo, Post Office Box 1632, Overton. Mayor, the city looks wonderful, and what a good feeling in this chambers. You know, I've been in many chambers, and there's just some really good vibes in this room with the staff and with the council. You can see how you interact with folks. I'm, I'm real proud of what's happened to the city. Okay, so, I'm here representing SA Recycling. It's my pleasure. This is an amazing company, a recycling company in over 15 states throughout the United States, and they have incredible machine located over at Nellis in El Campo Grande that crunches up automobiles. We met with Councilman Barone. He's been invited to go over and chump up a car or two. We're asking tonight for you to follow staff recommendations in approving this little ghost piece, if you will, of Nellis Boulevard that stops at I-15. I can't imagine it would ever go past I-15. So, from El Campo Grande to I-15, the only thing going up and down that road are some really big, big trucks, dump bellies, all sorts of vehicles. And if the general public was to go down there and figure out that they're lost and they can't get to I-15 and try and turn around, we're very concerned about the safety. So, we've requested a vacation of that portion of the road, and again, hope that you'll follow staff recommendations. And the gentlemen from SA are here if you have any questions.
Well, we'll find out. Let me go on to the public comments, see if there's anybody here from the public.
Absolutely.
Is anybody here from the public that'd like to discuss item number 17 with us? And I have a blue card, but it's only from you.
Yep.
That's right. So, anyway, seeing no one come forth, we'll close the public comment, and we will ask Councilman Barone.
Yeah, no. Ms. Redondo, of course, it's always a good, it's always good to see you.
Thank you.
And by the way, as a fellow animal lover, I still love everything that you're doing, you know, with rescuing animals. you know, with rescuing animals of all shapes and sizes. In reference to this, I think SA Recycling, of course, is one of our good business partners here in the community. And I think with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this vacation.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Counsel. Any comments, questions? If not, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor Lee, if I can just do one additional thing and thank staff. Stephanie, Nidia, and Lisa were incredible. Such really... You've got some amazing staff, and they were so helpful to me and responsive and quick. And if they'll continue to do that with everyone, North Las Vegas, forget about it. It's gonna be the best.
Coming from you, you're a professional. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item number 18 for possible action, public hearing adoption of the city of North Las Vegas tentative budget, North Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency tentative budget, and North Las Vegas Library tentative budget. Either is presented or with modifications for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Welcome, Director Hardy.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate your time. A month ago, we came and presented the preliminary budget to you for fiscal year 2023. We have since heard back from the Department of Taxation that we are in compliance, and so we're here to present the final budget to you. There was only a couple of minor changes, so I wanted to just cover those real quickly. First, we increased revenues for the utilities by $3.4 million in the final budget. And we also, due to inflation concerns and some contracts that have come up for renegotiation, we're a little concerned about supplies and services. So we have increased the budget for supplies and services in numerous funds throughout the city, and so that totaled $4.5 million. With that, everything else stayed the same materially, and there were no other material changes to the preliminary budget. And I can walk through just a few slides, but not much has changed from the preliminary. So the number... Total number of FTEs covered in the final budget will be 1,659. And again, all negotiated labor agreements have been covered in the fiscal year 2023 budget. Here we show you just a picture, a snapshot of the general fund, both for 2021, our projected or estimated 2022, and the final budget for 2023. In both this fiscal year and next fiscal year, we are projecting to spend down some of the ending fund balance. And then here, I just like to have this slide because it summarizes all funds citywide. As you can see, if you approve this final budget, it is approving expenditures of $806 million, almost $807 million for fiscal year 2023. So with that, it includes three different jurisdictions, as you know, the city of North Las Vegas, the Library District, and the Redevelopment Agency. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, we've got 1,600. How close are you to being fully staffed now? I know when we first got here, we had to, you know, to start rebuilding, you know, a new council member and stuff. Where are you at on staffing? Just curious.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. Claudia just leaned over to me and said, "We used to have 2,400." And I said back to her, "Well, my goal is to make sure we don't ever have layoffs again." So I think that we are staffed very thin in a lot of areas. It's something that this budget reflects the... Across the board, increasing in staffing, not just for current things, but also to make sure that we're aligning with council priorities. For example, there's a position in this budget for someone to coordinate the veterans efforts that we have going on at the Resource Center. Lots of times, I'll hear things like, "Well, in this other jurisdiction, there's 17 of me, and we only have, you know, two." And I just say, "Well, they're just not very efficient, and they're not run very effectively." That being said, I am well aware that we have lots of places in the city where, now that we have an HR team that's strong and in place with a strong recruiting team, we have more people on a recruiting team than we had in HR three years ago. That is something that's gonna help us to make sure we find very quality people for these positions that are in this budget and make sure that we're growing in an organic way that's sustainable and supportable by our budget.
Thank you. I have a question. Where do you see where we are deficient? Is it because there's just not the manpower out there? I mean, I do know we're always looking for the best and brightest people here, but where do you have needs that you should be aware of?
So one example would be in public safety. That's an area where we actually not only have the dollars, but we have the dollars that are dedicated specifically for public safety. Dollars can't be used for anything else. But we have... It's no surprise nationally that there's a challenge in recruiting people into this profession, and we are... We face that challenge, as well as there's a labor challenge that's happening nationally across the strata and all kinds of different professions. So one of the things we've done there, for example, I think this week, and Sally could correct me if I'm wrong, but one of a recruiter that we have in HR that's dedicated specifically to police has moved her office down into the police department. And we have officers that are down there that are engaged in recruiting efforts that will now be working with a civilian professional to make sure that we're able to really go out there and recruit. We'll be looking at other things. As you see, there's hiring bonuses that other jurisdictions across the country are doing that we're looking at. I think it's our ability to be competitive in a very stressed market at the same time that we're anticipating this silver tsunami that we've been looking at as one of the largest generations in our workforce is close to... Is in the middle of retirement, actually, depending on where your age is in that generation. We've recognized that that's a real reality that's happening. I do believe that part of that, what they literally call the silver tsunami, I think part of that has been delayed a little bit by market uncertainties that are happening across the country, where people maybe aren't as sure, or maybe a lot of their investments in the stock market. And so they're seeing such fluctuations there that they're staying in place a little bit longer, which is actually good for us because that provides us the opportunity to recruit quality individuals, to have the overlap that's necessary to make sure that there's proper training, that we're able to offload the information from the experienced employees, to make sure we don't have this knowledge gap that's happening. So I think there's a lot of challenges out there, which is why we took the steady approach to make sure that we had a top-notch HR team that was put together, which I believe has happened, that now that that's done, then they can help each individual department because every department has specific needs, as I just gave you one, which was in public safety.
I was in a meeting with Councilman Black here. It had to do with water today. And the BLM was in the meeting, and they mentioned there that we... They always seem to be needing more people. And the thought was, well, they train them, and then they come here. Are we a training agency for other places, or are we able to compete for the best people?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question. It's something we've been talking about the last couple of weeks, if you recall. One particular element of that, if you recall in the contract that was passed for Teamsters Local 14, in that collective bargaining agreement, we needed to go, as part of that agreement, we needed to go and do a comp and class survey. And that's something from the business perspective, it's very important for us because we've had specific instances where we can lose employees that are trained. We don't... The last thing you want is to become a training ground. It's a very expensive way to do business. Ask the state how it works with NHP. We regularly, routinely get officers that are trained at NHP that come over to the city of North Las Vegas, or Henderson, or Metro, because our wages are higher. That's a very expensive way to do business. One of the things that we're... We'll be bringing back to this body within the next month, actually, in June, is the contract for that comp and class study so that we can make sure that we are in line, not just with our... The public agencies, but also the private agencies, to make sure that whenever the residents of North Las Vegas are investing in the training of our employees and our team members, that we're able to retain them, retain that talent, retain that investment that's been made in them. And we're... I think that the comp and class study will help us to identify where we're at. We're also doing a lot of cultural changes within the institution to invest in our employees, to make sure that we can retain them.
I think the last question I have, this might be a more Sally question, but I think you can answer it. We went through eras where we didn't hire anybody for like six, five years here, you know, and then all of a sudden, we have all these people retiring. Are we past that big retirement surge, or do we have another surge of retirees? I know it's always every monthly, but I'm just curious. Are you concerned about that?
I'm very concerned about it. It's something regularly when I meet with groups of employees. In fact, I asked the question yesterday with a group of employees, for them to... Who had been with the city for less than five years? And some hands went up. Who's been with the city for more than 20 years? And some hands went up. I said, "Who didn't raise their hand?" And there was one person, you know, one person in 20 people that raised their hand. It is... It's very clear that one of the challenges that the city of North Las Vegas faces is you had a series of rifts that happened in, you know, 2011, 2012, and that ended up people that were laid off or that were turned from the city were... It was based on seniority. And what that means is we have a lot of people that have been here a really long time and a lot of people that haven't been here very long, and it's that middle area. So I think that by the natural occurrence of what's happening with some of the people that might have already thought they were retiring, staying just a little bit longer, it gives us a little bit of breathing room. But my biggest concern is making sure that we're able to compete with salary and wages out there, to bring in talented people, and make sure that we have enough overlap where we can have a complete and total information transfer because it's very expensive to try and figure that out. We've taken some specific steps within management and throughout the different departments to get SOPs in place and to make sure that we're identifying our... I like to tell employees that one of the really important things for employees that we have across the city is every team member needs to understand how important they are to the institution. And I can guarantee anybody that works for the city of North Las Vegas has a valuable place in the city. We don't have any fat. Everybody that works here plays a very valuable role. There are some people that they know systems that no one else knows. So because of that, we don't have a lot of room for error in making sure that that information's being transferred to the next group of employees. And we're very cognizant of that and working very hard to make sure that we're capturing that information.
So, Will, you've took a very boring subject and made it pretty exciting, bringing the city manager in on it.
I love it when Ryan answers all the questions. Thank you.
No, actually, this does... It enlightens us, and employees and budgeting and everything that you have to prepare for is very important. So I'm gonna ask the council if they have any comments or questions. Councilman Barone?
Yeah. Mayor, I just... It's kind of funny. We were having this conversation here. It wasn't all that long ago when you were directing a former city manager to make sure that we got three bids on things like printer cartridges. We were scrimping and saving for printer cartridges. I... It's almost flabbergasting to... It's mind-blowing to understand just how far we've come from that. That doesn't mean that we're gonna go crazy. We're not gonna start making it rain here. But I think, much to your point and to the city manager's point there, we do definitely have to invest in people capital, and we do have to grow intelligently. And if there's any one community, if there's any one city that knows this better than any other city, it's us, because we've had to live through it. You know, my colleagues here who are there, right, saw the bad old days, and I certainly want to go... I don't want to go to that. The public should be rest assured that when we talk about being good stewards of the public trust, you're not gonna find five people who are better at it in any board, in any governing board anywhere here in the state of Nevada, because we understand it. Going and walking and going past all the homes that were abandoned, each one of those was someone's dream that was gone. All the businesses that they were... That were holding on by their fingernails, right? It's something remarkable, and I think it's a tribute to all the staff that has been... I'm just looking out, and I see people who, when they came on, they were already here. They were already veterans when I came on. And I'm really, really happy to all the staff that stuck with us and made... We've had some success. It's because of our staff, and especially, again, for the people who I... Just some of them are here in this room as we speak. And then I think we've been really good in hiring good people who are now part of the team and are sustaining and actually growing us in the right direction. And it's... As... This is my city. I'm not gonna go anywhere, Mayor. I'm not gonna live anywhere else. And I... If I were to be gone... If I were to... Well, I don't want to get hit by a bus tomorrow or tonight. But I think our city's in good hands, especially because of the staff that we have. So thank you to your team and, of course, to the rest of our staff.
Well spoken. Councilman Churchill, Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I was here... I was appointed from 2009 through 11 to fill former Mayor Sherry Buck's seat. And that wasn't a happy place at that time. That was the beginning of the laying off and the firing of an awful lot of people. And, you know, look back on it, and it's still very horrific to myself, being part of making those decisions. But they had to be made, and unfortunately, public safety was part of that. And of course, I think our teams just took the hardest hit of all. But having said that, it's kind of ironic that it was just yesterday that Councilman Black and I sat down with our new police chief and assistant police chief. And again, I want to congratulate them both for that promotion. I think they will be doing an excellent job. They've done an excellent job. So, you know, I just took that opportunity to articulate to them in a way that how important it is to look to the future and kind of think outside the box as to what we're doing here, how it relates to other jurisdictions. We definitely don't want to be the training mecca of employees and then have them leave us and go somewhere else. So I'm happy to say that when it comes to public safety, I believe that we're surely in good hands with Chief Gravatt and Assistant Chief Harris. Thank you.
Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Yeah, I think we find ourselves in a really favorable position, and I don't think that happened by chance. We've made some sound decisions in recent years to put ourselves in this place. You know, we've been very prudent about how we've hired and when we've hired, and the employees that we have currently have picked up the slack, if you will, and I think they're, you know, that we owe them a great deal of gratitude for their willingness to do as much as they can. And I just think that's really important to note. And as we find ourselves in this good situation, we have sound finances based on the decisions that we've made, and that gives us the latitude to be patient and to be strategic about how we build our team. We can invest, we can reinvest, and we can do so in a strategic way. And I think we've put ourselves in that place in order to do so. And so I think our residents will be the beneficiaries of that as we move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Wong Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Coming on council in 2011, and I think that's when the economy just reached that tipping point, there were dire times where, you know, you go home and you couldn't sleep at night because, you know, you had to make decisions that were not going to make some people happy, but you know you had to make those decisions. And I always tell people to know where we are now is to understand where we have been. And as the growth has happened over the years, it's been a journey, but it's been a journey that I think we approached sensibly the right way to get us where we are. Then COVID hits, and that just put a little monkey wrench into our progress. But I see where we are today and with this council's vision and how we're going to move the city forward. It just makes me proud to be a North Las Vegas resident, especially working with this council and our amazing staff. And then the employees that we are bringing on, that we have hired to create these teams, they're phenomenal people, and they come to work. And I'm like, "You're still smiling." So we welcome them with open arms and just... We're on the path to a trajectory that's gonna be super, super positive and very beneficial for the city, and I just can't wait to see all the progress that is still yet to come.
Thank you. So, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to... Absent police and fire, we're at 1659. I mean, if we go more than 100 people, that would you come back to the council? The only reason I'm saying that is because we don't know what this economy is gonna be like. You know, we don't want to hire somebody and their dreams are, oh my gosh, then I have to lay them off, you know? Would you kind of... If you get more than 100 more people, would you come back to us and tell us where we're at so we can monitor that just a little bit?
Yeah, Mayor, I appreciate that. And that's, you know, just a couple of thoughts on that is, first, we're... It's gonna be... We're gonna be working very hard to make sure we're able to fill the existing positions that we have that are open right now. We also, at the same time, need to keep up with people as they're retiring, and what you're looking at is a budget that has, you know, 100-plus new positions. So it's... I will do that. I'll talk with you offline on what you mean by that because the aggregate of 100, it's 100 new positions. Is it... Because we have... We're backfilling as well as adding. But I do share your concern when it comes to the economy. I believe that this budget represents or recognizes the reality that there's challenges out there. I think that as a council, you've put the city in a good position by making sure we had longer-term contracts with our bargaining groups to get through this weird time. I was talking to staff last week, and I said, "Well, I think we're probably in the middle of a recession right now. We just don't have the numbers yet at the federal level." And then, because once they declare a recession, you're already in it. They don't say, "Oh, hey, they just started yesterday." They have to have the quarterly reports. I think we'll find, once we start getting some numbers from Washington, that we're in the middle of it. And then we're gonna have this conversation that's so annoying sometimes for people that, you know, that deal with this. Is it an S curve? Is it a W curve? Is it a V? Is it a U? Is it an S curve? Is it a W curve? Is it a V? Is it a U? Like, then it's going to be all the speculation of what kind of recession it is. But I don't think there's going to be much speculation on the fact that we're in one right now. I think we're seeing it. We're seeing that even in this budget, as Director Hardy said, we've increased the cost from just what we brought a month ago on this because we're recognizing that our contracts are all coming back higher. Everything's coming back higher. And and we have to make sure that we continue to have the same mentality. I appreciate what Councilman Brown said, but we very much are still doing three bids. We very much are looking very closely at everything because we whenever the pandemic hit, one of the things that was very apparent to me is I sat in those those meetings where we had these, I mean, they were just crazy, long meetings throughout the day. Everything was shut down. As I looked at the other jurisdictions and I had this little thought in my heart, like, man, I am glad I'm not you. Man, I am glad I'm not you. Because we are in a really good position with the city, but that's relative. We're in a much better position, as Councilman Goines-Brown said, from where we were in the past. We're in a much healthier position than what some of our, some other local governments are in Southern Nevada. That just puts us in a in a different place, but it doesn't mean we we rest on our laurels. I do want to thank Director Hardy and his finance staff for their efforts that they've done in this budget, in the changes that the management has asked for as we've moved along in order to present to you all a budget that represents the weird climate we're in, the uncertainty that we're in. Also want to thank, as you all were talking about, all the efforts that's been done by staff. We've also had a lot of, a lot of work that's been done by the state, by the Department of Taxation, by Kelly Langley there, who is constantly working with our team to make sure that our budgets are consistent with state law and that we're keeping out of trouble. So I'm thankful for them and for all the efforts that they they're taking.
So I went the other day and got gas. It was over $5 a gallon. And then I went to buy some, a box of cereal. It was over $5. You know what I mean? Things are, things are moving in this world right now. And I just want to make sure that we get, we get to the point that we're cautious. Now, I'm going to ask you an ending fund balance. We're early on this, Will. Our ending fund balance is 8%. Is that correct?
The, by statute, we have to be above 8%, I believe, is the answer to that question.
So
And we're there.
I would just question if we would consider or think about among you guys, if there's a time to take a look at that as an insurance policy, because if people start losing their homes, they're not paying their water bills and, you know, we have to step in.
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that we do follow a lot of the economic chatter that's going on. We are watching the markets. We we are aware of the instability right now in both the equity markets, housing markets, and whatever else may be. So we have not presented a plan that we don't think is sustainable. This is a prudent budget, we believe. Currently, we think, as you can see on Slide 3, I believe, we're projecting the ending fund balance in this fiscal year. So when we close out in five to six weeks, we'll be closer to 42%. And so we do have a bit of a runway there in case we need to.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Will, thank you for the presentation. It brought out a lot of good discussion. Thank you very much. So I'm going to, unless there's other comments or questions, I'm going to, the chair will call for a motion to adopt the.
Mayor, if possible, if we could open public hearing.
Did anybody from the, we talked so long, I thought they went to sleep. You know, is there anybody from the public, or I have blue cards, I didn't see them concerning this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing now. And a call for motion to adopt the budget for the fiscal year, fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this budget.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for me remembering not to do that, or I didn't forget to do that. Item 19.
Item number 19, public hearing for possible action regarding the city's delinquent utility accounts, adopting the delinquent accounts report and authorizing staff to file adopted report with the Board of County Commissioners.
Good afternoon. Tom Brady, Utilities Director for the record. Every May, in accordance with the municipal code, we begin the process of reviewing accounts that have become delinquent. Now, one of the directors, council and management has made is that we work with all residents, all businesses, in any way we possibly can to make sure that that we are continuing to deliver quality service. Part of that comes payment for service. And so we work diligently to make sure that we are collecting everything we can and that we give every opportunity to the customers of North Las Vegas to make those payments. Well, in accordance with Municipal Code, Section 130420, every May, we bring forward those accounts that have resisted our efforts to work with them. And this is the beginning of that process. One of the things that we look at is we begin this list and then we take that to the county to include it with the collection of property tax. Now, in this case, when we began this process, we started with 653 properties with delinquency estimated around $1,021,000. Now, when we began this process, there's specific steps that we have to take. We send notices, and this is just the final step because we use phone calls, we use emails, we use letters. We use every opportunity to reach out to them, and these are the most resistant. Now that we are doing this, any potential properties who are able to resolve their accounts by June 1st will get removed from the list. And so what we are asking at this time is, subject to the completion and the closing of the public hearing, is that the council adopt the delinquent accounts report and with any appropriate modifications and direct staff to file it with the county for inclusion with the tax roll.
Director Brady, what do you call delinquent? 30 days is delinquent, six months is, I mean, when you get to the point, you know what I mean? When you say this just isn't moving?
These are typically, I would say, anything more than 90 days or greater. I mean, there is some sense that if someone is two months late and we try to work with them and they refuse to work with us, now, one of the options we have is we can just shut their water off. But we've come through this this period with the moratoriums with learning a lesson that we would always try and work with everyone before getting to that point. And one of the thing, one of the steps that we've been able to take is when you have a property owner who's doing that, we always have have this final result. We can go to a tax lien so that we don't actually have to take that step. But we're trying to make the best business decisions as possible so that ultimately it's not the city left holding the bag.
Thank you. I'm going to open up for public comment right now. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to speak on item 19? I have a Ms. Sally Carrillos. And anybody else would like to speak? Just by a show of hands, anybody else out there? Welcome, Sally. Thank you for being here.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, this is my first time to talk like public like that, so excuse me. Oh, okay. I have a big amount balance, like 2,900 for my water and sewer. And I received this letter that they were going to make a lien on my property, which I'm trying now to protest that. And first, I want to thank all the staff of in the water and sewer because they are really doing a great job. And I don't have any objection that they are trying their best. But in my case, I tried to work with them, called them, and they called me. And the only solution they have that I have to pay at least half the the balance, which is a lot for my circumstances, which is 1,500. So I ask, as the NV Energy Company, they worked with me to pay like $300 a month. So the the monthly charges plus some of the previous balance. But they told me, unfortunately, they can't do this, and the least they can do is paying the the half. I explained my situation because like I'm in North Las Vegas from 10 years. We never be behind on the balance. But because of divorce situation and my ex-husband, he was the one who responsible to pay this, but he didn't pay. And COVID-19 hit us and actually the company waited two, two years. They didn't shut the water, but actually that wasn't my responsibility to pay. Now I am the one who responsible to pay and the arrears. So I was asking to, that the company in general, for me and for other residents, to be more flexible regarding the working with us and not to pay like a big amount immediately. And I I promised them, because I'm now working two jobs, I'm a single mom, I have my three kids, that I will work with them if they give me this chance. Actually, they refused, but and they shut the water. And that was really hard for two days, but I called back and I was fortunate to talk with one lead. She was really great and she told me, okay, you can pay whatever you have now. I told her, by any ways, I can pay more than 500. So she accepted to return back the water. And she said she will give me two weeks to maybe I can apply for public program or whatever. If not, I have to pay all the amount again or they will shut the water again. So I'm asking for me and many of maybe similar cases, that you guys to have some kind of program that you can work with us without shutting the water because we can't live without water and, of course, the kids. And to work with us monthly as as you did in COVID because regarding the inflation now and we all struggling somehow, we will, that will be a great step to happen. And to wait for me not to make lien on my property and I promise that I will work for you if you, if there are arrangements like many months, not immediately all the amount. Thank you so much.
Let me ask the director a question.
Yes.
So Director, if you put a lien on a piece of property, does it start the process of the house being foreclosed upon? Or does it sit there for a period of time? I mean, so if somebody made their monthly payment every month and they added another $100 or $300 or whatever they could, how long does a lien stay before it gets, you know, started the process of foreclosure?
In the process, there are two different types of liens. We can place a lien on the property so that if they refinance or if they sell, sell it, they have to check with us so that that bill can be paid, but it doesn't start the foreclosure process. This process that we're starting adds the delinquency to the property tax. And so I'm not aware of any that have gotten to the point of foreclosure. But what it basically means is when the tax bill or the tax roll is is set by the county in July, this amount will be included in the tax bill. So you will have to pay it to not have something like that happen initiated by the county. And not aware of it ever having gotten to that point, but that's where we are. And one thing to to recognize, we have been more than diligent in terms of working with all of our customers. I understand this might be one of those situations that's questionable. However, one of the the requirements, whenever we do a payment arrangement, is they have to stay current. Because ultimately, if you're working with someone to to cover a past due amount, if they're not paying their current balance, that number is getting bigger while you're trying to make payments on it. And also, when those payment arrangements aren't met, we've, we've gone as many as as renegotiating payment arrangements as many as five times when someone does not stick with it. And I'm not saying that that's the situation. But ultimately, we get to that point where we we have to do something about it. And that's what happened when the the water got shut off. Now, one of the things that we can say, this is not closed. We have until June 1st. If we can make a reasonable arrangement, then that person's name can come off the list. But what we're pursuing right now is those who, for whatever reason, have not done their part.
Ms. Sally, we have over 600 people and some of them are businesses. And they just wait to the last minute. They take advantage of the city. And then this is the only thing that puts some teeth into what we do. Because everybody in the city should pay for its own water, their own sewer. You know, it's an individual process here. We're going to have to move these on tonight. He says there's a window of opportunity for you to work with him, but the other 599 people are just ignoring him, you know? So don't take this as personal, but we have to move forward. And there are different circumstances for different people. We get that.
I understand, Mayor. I'm just talking about the residents which, like me, may be struggling. And it would be great if there is like working more with the company. Like, you don't have to pay half or all the balance because we really can't.
We, we, we understand inflation is happening. We've reduced our sewer rates to 30% now. You know, that maybe you don't know that happened, but we're looking for every way we can to keep your family in that home and surviving. So maybe you and Mr. Brady could talk afterwards, if that would be okay.
And I do have staff here who can speak.
Okay. Thank you for coming forward, though. Is there anybody else that would like to come see us in public comment to City Council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And the chair will take a motion to adopt and report the authorized motion to adopt the report and authorize staff to file it with the Clark County Commission, or the Clark County. So the chair will take a motion. Anybody who wants to make a motion, I'll make the motion. We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Brady, I do understand that, because you briefed me on this, that these are the people in general that have not responded to your request to work with them. And clearly, this young lady, even though it was her first time at the at the microphone, she was very articulate and, you know, really, you know, hit me hard, understanding what a family needs to go through, even though COVID, for the most part, is over. But now we're in an inflationary situation. So we don't have a program here that would allow the residents that respond to to your request to A, keep their bills current, but yet allow them to put a certain amount of the previous bill onto that every month to stop paying off the delinquency. Do we have something like that?
We don't have a payment forgiveness program. However, there are state and county programs that provide assistance, that we walk people through the process. And that's one of the challenges is oftentimes people don't necessarily want to take the steps that they need to to get the assistance that is available. We do have programs for seniors which do give a lower rate. In this case, that's not applicable. However, one of the challenges that we have is sometimes when these broken payment arrangements come up, it's a question of how many times do you go back? And I'm not saying that that's the case in this instance, but we we definitely are always willing to work with them.
Thank you.
Certainly.
So motion's been passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to business.
Item number 20, for possible action to approve Resolution Number 2690, Resolution of the North Las Vegas City Council, adopting findings regarding utilization of revenue generated by the Clark County Crime Prevention Act of 2016.
Counselor, any comments, questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move for approval, item number 20.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 21, for possible action to approve Resolution Number 2691, Resolution of the North Las Vegas City Council, adopting findings regarding utilization of revenue generated by the Clark County Sales and Use Tax of 2005.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion. What's to approve? We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Item number 22, for possible action to pass and adopt ordinance number 3114, An ordinance related to zoning, amending the existing PUD Plan Unit Development District containing approximately 8.53 acres. ZN-40-2019, Lone Mountain and Losy, consisting of 51 residential lots and one commercial lot of property generally located at the northwest corner of Lone Mountain Road and Losy Road and providing other matters properly later to.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goines-Brown?
I'm going to try to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Ah, it's working now. Thank you. Nope, my voice, yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, these were in your your district. Yeah, these were in your district, so...
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Items approved. Item number 23.
Item number 23, for possible action to pass and adopt ordinance Number 3118, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassified approximately 15.19 acres of the C1 neighborhood commercial district to a PUD planned unit development district, ZN-06-2022, Tropical Losi, consisting of a 196 lot, multifamily townhome subdivision for property located in the southwest corner of Losi Road and Tropical Parkway and provided for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you. Ms. Goines-Brown, this is in your district. Do you want to say something about this?
I briefed with Mr. Gornar on 22 and 23, and so I'll make a motion to approve 23.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. There we go. Moving on to appointments.
Item number 24, for possible action to approve the appointment of Councilman Isaac, not to appoint you, you're already here, the appointment by Councilman Isaac Barone of Alex Bernal of the City of North Las Vegas Charter Committee.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Mr. City Manager. I just want to nominate my very good friend, and we go all the way back to Jim Bridger Middle School, and he's a person who actually works in the community, an activist, and he also worked for the Clark County, for Commissioner Tick Sagerblum, longtime resident, Mr. Alex Bernal, to this committee.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 25, for possible action to approve the appointment of Councilman Scott, by Councilman Scott Black of John Payton of the City of North Las Vegas Charter Committee.
Councilman.
Yes, I'd like to take the opportunity to appoint Mr. John Payton, a Ward III resident, to the City of North Las Vegas Charter Committee. Mr. Payton is in his last year of school teaching at Western High School, I'm sorry, Clark High School, has been in our community for a long time and is really excited about this opportunity to help us with our charter.
Thank you very much, Counsel. We have a nominee and we have motions. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 26, for possible action to approve the appointment by Councilwoman Goines-Brown of Tim Smith of the City of North Las Vegas Charter Committee.
Councilwoman.
I'm honored to recommend Mr. Tim Smith. He comes to us with prior experience in assisting with the Charter Commission in Massachusetts, and so he's very excited to be a part of this committee. So I will make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 27, for possible action to approve the appointment by Mayor John Lee of Michelle Abney and Brandy Harrison to the City of North Las Vegas Charter Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Abney and Ms. Harrison seem to be wonderful people. I had Mr. Luke, our director, interview them. He felt very confident then. And Leo, our government affairs expert. So I will appoint Michelle Abney and Brandy Harrison to the North Las Vegas Charter Committee. That's the motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 28, for possible action to approve the appointment by Mayor Pro-Tim Richard Churchill of Donna Darden and Don Schaefer to the City of North Las Vegas Charter Committee.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Yeah, it gives me a lot of pleasure to appoint Ms. Darden, who's a, she's very active in the community in many different areas. I've known her for some time. And of course, Mr. Don Schaefer, who is on multiple boards with both Sun City and the Mass Association and has also been involved with state legislature when it comes to BDRs. So both of those people will be my selected people to be on the Charter Committee.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 29, for possible action to appoint Bobby Mays and Wilson Edgell to the North Las Vegas Deferred Compensation Plan Committee.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the second public forum, now is the time set aside for the public to speak on issues that were not on the agenda tonight but are within the jurisdiction and control of the North Las Vegas City Council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, no items raised during the second public forum may be deliberated or acted upon by the City Council tonight. However, the items discussed may be referred to the City Manager or other city staff for action by the, or action by the City Council later date. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or statement, written statements at this time?
No, sir.
And is there anyone from the audience that would like to come forth now and address the City Council? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum. Moving on to City Managers' Report.
I had one item, Mayor, but I'll leave it till next time because we inadvertently had the public forum before. So since we've had the public forum, I'll reserve my comments to next meeting. Thank you.
You know, we just had a huge announcement in the city. Is that something to do with our leadership and the department, Police Department? Or do you want to say something about Jackie? You don't want to say anything about Jackie? Or do you want her to be here?
Yeah, I do. We're going to bring Chief Gravat and Chief Harris before, for ratification, I think, the second meeting in June. Make sure that they have family in town for that. So we'll be doing that.
We're pretty proud of them. We thank you for that. Is that the end of your City Manager's Report, then? Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.